And a list of participating dentists are available at Delta Dental.
You know, that's what our.
Good afternoon. Today is Monday, October 27th. It's 3:00 PM and this is the Moscow City Council Administrative Committee. My name is Tom Lamar. I'm chairing the committee and with me is John Weber and Gary Redner.
I'm here too.
Wayne Kraus. We.
I wasn't sure. Last time you were.
I was here.
You were Walter. No, last time you were Walter.
I've never been Walter.
So, the first thing on the agenda is approving the October 13th minutes.
I would move we approve them.
And I would.
Walter probably would agree.
He probably would agree, but he's not here, so I will agree and we'll pass those on. Approve them. The second item on the agenda is the Indian Hills Park naming with Eric Newell.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Eric.
Hello, how are you, sir?
Good, good.
Very good. Haven't seen you guys for a while, so here I am.
We see you.
That's not good.
We see you and you can't see us.
Alright.
We have our ways.
Big brothers out there, huh?
Yeah, right.
Just, I'm here to present you guys with the Indian Hills Park naming process. As you know, we went out to the community and solicited names. We had 23 names that were submitted back to us. Most, there were a lot more responses saying they like Indian Hills Park and we went through the 60-day comment period after Parks and Rec Commission meeting in July and September 25th. There was one comment and the comment was, "I like the name, but it could be something else too." So, it was very, it was very, they wanted to see Mr. Parks recognized somehow at the park. They were okay with the name that was submitted. And so, following the naming process that we have set up, I'm here to say, would you guys accept the park name of Indian Hills Park?
John?
Well, thanks for showing up here, Eric. After reading the various names and things on the list, they, for the most part, all kinda circled around the name Indian Hills Park. And I think that's fairly appropriate and I don't think that it would offend anyone and actually I think it's pretty much right on point. So, I'm personally in favor of the name Indian Hills Park since it's in Indian Hills.
Okay.
And it is a park.
It will be both, yes.
Wayne, do you have any other comments?
Oh, that's fine. I thought some of the other names that were submitted were innovative and creative. One was submitted, it was called Cray Cray Fun Parks. Not too sure what that was all about. Yeah, but.
Yeah, I love that one.
Interesting. But yeah, that's fine. Yeah, they followed the process that we utilize and Indian Hills Park it shall be.
I think, I think we're okay for moving that on forward to the consent agenda, I imagine. The question I have for you, Eric, is aside from the park naming, is there, do we have plans for doing something to recognize Bill's generosity, Bill Parks generosity for helping out?
I don't know that. I don't know.
Any thoughts? Have there been any thoughts about that or?
I've been talking.
Could we do something or?
I suspect that we should.
It might be good for us to do something.
Find out if anything's in the works.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing the naming and.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm saying that it's a separate, kind of a separate issue, but some kind of recognition for what he did to help make that happen.
Well, I think that on the sign of the park itself, it'll say Indian Hills Park and there could be a small little testimonial, a half dozen words or something.
Something.
Blow that on the sign that would accomplish.
Calling on the mayor. He would like to say something.
Yeah, you did. They got the mayor.
Now we're in trouble.
We got the big boss here now.
I just wanted to throw this out. I liked the name Indian Hills Park, but I think what would be kinda neat would be to have some kind of a plaque, like a rock with a nice brass plaque. It doesn't have to be huge, but something with Bill Parks' name on it and the significant role that he played in it, because he did play a big part in it. So, I think that's something that all of us, the councilors, should take a look at and I think that would be very, not only worthwhile, but it's something we should do.
We have a policy and practice for recognition trees and that sort of thing, so certainly talk to Dwight about that and bring some ideas back.
That'd be nice. It'd be nice to recognize that generosity somehow.
I also wanted to mention that Dwight had planned to be here today, but I think he had to go to the doctor, but he had actually some designs from, from the presentation of Toro's class that had come up with a whole bunch of Indian designs for Indian Hills. He was very excited about showing you. I'm sorry that he's not here right now, but I know that he was very excited to show you guys, so I imagine that he'll come back at some point in time and show you some of the design concepts that they come up with. He was, he was actually very excited and he mentioned it many times.
Yep, he did. So, I'm the council liaison to Parks and Rec Commission and he showed those slides last Thursday night. And he's very excited about all the different features. One, one has a sand volleyball court in it and another one has an amphitheater in it. There are all sorts of ideas. No, no monetary restrictions at all.
I'm just telling you that he was very excited to show it to you and I'll let you guys figure the funds out, so.
I know, it's good. They're fun. They're fun images. Thanks, thanks so much, gentlemen. Thanks, Eric.
Moving right along.
Item number three, proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter III, to allow residential uses within commercial zoning districts with Mike Ray from the Community Development Department.
Just wanted to brief the council on an upcoming legislative amendment which will be going to council on November 17th. And this is to allow more residential uses within commercial zoning districts. And so, just to give you a little bit of background, over the years, Community Development received numerous inquiries regarding the allowance of residential uses within commercial zoning districts. And if you recall, we also had the 2013 council goal basically to expand the perceived downtown area on Main Street from basically East Street to the South Cuplet. And part of that was the evaluation of zoning and development standards. That whole corridor is essentially within the Motor Business zoning district. We had taken a look at that and really a zone change to a different designation within that area was gonna create too many non-conformities. And so, really, the course of action that we decided to take was to amend the Motor Business district to include more residential uses within that zone. And so, I did a little bit of background research with four other municipalities which included Lewiston, Pullman, Coeur d'Alene, and Missoula. We also reviewed other city commercial zoning districts which could potentially allow more residential opportunities within those. And part of that, we identified basically four districts, neighborhood business, general business, motor business, as well as industrial, which could be amended to include more residential uses. And so, looking at neighborhood business, general business, and motor business, basically our proposed amendments would allow residential uses behind or above commercial uses. This is similar to the central business zoning district as to not interrupt the commercial frontage, which is important within those zones.
Chairman.
Mike, could you tell us what exactly is the, what's the allowance of residential uses in those zones at this time? Is it allowed at all? Just for the benefit of the council?
Sure.
By CUP, I think.
Yeah.
Typically, it ranges, you know. General business, it would be a conditional use permit, would be the allowance for residential. Industrial, right now, basically you're limited to a dwelling for a caretaker or watchman employed on premise. And really, the challenge we run into with the industrial zone is that it's arguable whether you need a caretaker or watchman employed on premises. I mean, even if you had a contractor's construction yard, you know, they could argue that, well, we need somebody there to be able to watch this heavy equipment and expensive equipment so it doesn't get ripped off. And so, that's the challenge that staff deals with, is just the really, the ability to argue, you know, that kind of ambiguous, the wording that's currently within the zone.
So, essentially what the amendment you're doing today is to make it a use of right within these parameters?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Quick question to that, Mike. When, anytime fitness built, remodeled, and then they put all their apartments up, did they have to do that with the CUP?
They'd actually had to go through the plan unit development process, which is currently, yeah, with, within motor business. And so, you know, that, that requires an upfront cost of, you know, establishing elevations typically from an architect as well as a public hearing through Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, you know, it, you really don't know the outcome. It could be approved, it could be denied.
This would eliminate that.
This would eliminate that. This would allow that by right, basically above or behind commercial uses. Just so it doesn't interrupt that commercial frontage though, right? And we also propose to amend those zones to also include an option for a conditional use permit to be approved for ground floor residential uses. And so, these would be, you know, basically residential uses that aren't on a, you know, behind or above a commercial frontage, just standard residential uses. And so, that'd be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment through the CUP process via a public hearing.
So, you say behind or above. Can it be below?
Now, yeah.
You just don't want it in front of.
Yeah, exactly. You don't want to interrupt that frontage.
Or next to or whatever.
At the street level, really.
Got it, okay.
And then also looking at industrial zone, basically just to allow one dwelling unit per lot where this is accessory to a permitted principal use. And so, basically just eliminating the current language that exists where the watchmen or caretaker. And so, people don't have to justify to our department that why, you know, they would need a watchman or caretaker, as long as this is accessory to a principal use. So, in a, basically an allowed commercial use on the property.
Gary?
Okay, so, situation, if you had a, say you had a, I don't know, tire shop. You could have a accessory, could there be an accessory residential use to that tire shop, Mike, that you can think of?
There could be, yeah. Per our amendment, there'd be allowed one dwelling.
So, there'd be no justification at all?
There wouldn't be required.
I guess I'm just asking, where it's accessory, I'm looking for a definition of the term accessory. So, it doesn't have to be related, it just?
Well, you need to have a principal use on the site. You can't just establish a single-family dwelling on the property. There needs to at least be a permitted principal use, you know, in this case, you know, maybe a tire shop.
And this sits upstairs or downstairs or behind it or whatever it is?
Correct, could be in the building. Yeah, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Just wanted to go over the next steps. Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing and reviewed this on October 22nd, which was last week, and they unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment to City Council. And we've scheduled the matter before City Council on November 17th, like I'd mentioned before, and certainly be able to answer any more questions that you might have on this.
John?
Well, I don't have a question because I was at the planning and zoning meeting and it was thoroughly discussed by the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the wording was also discussed and about the only thing that needed any clarification at all, and it was clarified really quite well by Mike, that the above or the second floor or third floor was already taken care of. This is something that would be behind. And once we got past that hurdle, everyone on the planning and zoning was more than happy to allow this. It allows for infill and it also allows for multiuses of a piece of property in the Motor Business district. And it also protects the other businesses and it protects the corners of any particular lot that may be in question. So, after listening to Mike present it and listening to the discussion that Planning and Zoning went through, I personally I support this.
We'll have a hearing on next Monday. Or not next Monday, it's the 17th.
Yes.
Wayne, you look like you're gonna ask something or say something.
No, just a comment. Glad to see this come through. This accomplishes everything that John mentioned. Makes it more user-friendly, commercially building. And the other thing that it really does, one of the things we've looked at when it comes to development, is increasing density levels within the core area of the city, which has always been a goal. Infill is always good. Increasing the core density is preferable to continuing to expand out into the peripheral areas of the community too. So, I like it and I'll certainly support it.
Going back to Wayne's question earlier, he asked about the PUD and the example of the 24-hour fitness and the residences above. And you said that this would mean that that PUD would not need to take place, but then you've also said that this allows one unit.
No, it basically just being the industrial zone, so.
Oh, that's just in the industrial zone.
Yeah, that's industrial, yeah.
So, that limitation of one unit does not exist for the motor business and general business and so forth?
It currently exists, but we're proposing to eliminate it from the language.
I understand that, yeah. What I'm talking about is in the proposal. In the proposal, the number one, the one unit does not exist any longer.
It's not there. Nope, nope. It's just an industrial.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And the other question I had was, are there any, so aside from the zone, so say motor business zone, there are multiple uses in that. Do you know if there are any uses that would restrict any residents at all? For example, a gas station. Would you, would you still be able to have a residence at a gas station?
Correct.
Would that be?
Correct.
Okay, so it's.
At all life safety.
Right.
Yeah, building code separation, you know, are typical, typical factors that we look at, but yeah, there's no.
So, there aren't any uses within motor business or industrial or any of these other things that would specifically call out on top of that?
No, as long as it's a permitted use within the zone, then it's allowed.
Okay.
And this would propose to allow residential uses by right within the zone, and so you could have multiple principal uses on a single piece of property within motor business.
Thanks.
Tom? Might be very clear, as he just said, at Planning and Zoning, that any of the rules, regulations that have, have to be used now in building anything anywhere would still be used.
Still apply to this.
To apply to this situation. Nothing would change. You still need all of the other things that you may or may not need to put up a building or to put up an apartment. It just that it allows them to be put in as long as you meet the conditions. You don't have to go do a conditional use permit. You don't need to come in front of Planning and Zoning. And with the exception of if you wanna put an apartment building or a multi, multifamily unit in, so.
You know, the other thing I just thought of too is this creates a little more uniformity with the Legacy Crossing, because as I recall, I might be looking at Bill to see if he nods his head up and down or not. Is when we did the overlay zone for Legacy Crossing, it was, one of the goals was to allow just exactly this type of thing to happen.
Yeah, we allow that type of mixed use and we also allow ground floor residential through a conditional use permit within that zone as well, so pretty consistent with that.
That has to be behind also though, doesn't it, in Legacy Crossing?
It has to be, yep. It has to be behind or above for residential uses.
Right, just like, just like we're doing here.
But we still allow what we're proposing here, that ground floor residential uses, as long as you go through a conditional use permit, public hearing before the Board of Adjustment, you could achieve ground floor that are basically up front, street level.
It allows that CUP process.
Correct, correct.
Okay, good. Okay, so November 17th, public hearing on this issue. Thanks, thanks so much. Thanks, great.
Thanks, Mike.
The next item on the agenda is proposed business license ordinances update discussion with Rod and maybe back up with Stephanie.
Stephanie will chime in as necessary, as usual.
Hey.
Good afternoon. Now, I have no idea how to work this.
Oh, this is, that goes back to that staff training. I'm excited. PowerPoint.
There you go. Which button do you hit to turn the screen? It's hidden here.
It's beyond my technical capabilities.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't have those classes when you were going to school, so.
It's not part of the training.
I knew it was a single button.
We actually did DOS.
2000?
Programs based on DOS.
Hey.
Hi.
This. You're gonna bring us back to 2004.
Bring you back to what?
2004.
No, well, we do have a ordinance regulating vendors and I think the issue why we're here today is Stephanie's had some questions or some issues that come up concerning this, different things with the vendors. One of them has been vending operation size. That seems to be one of the issues right now. Right now, they're limited to a 24-square-foot footprint. So, their operating space must be 24 square feet, but we have a couple vendors where they're outside their.
So.
That size.
Three-foot by eight-foot table, you know, like a regular conference table, is that size, so there's no room for the person to sit down or?
These were intended, when we first came up with this, it was intended for hot dog cart operations.
Okay.
So.
So, if somebody had a table.
Yes.
Then they'd already be exceeding that.
As long as they meet the, the regulations for passage, clear space, City Clerk has certain amount of discretion on some of those things, but not on the size of the, the operation.
Okay, okay.
And so, right now, some people are trying to push that size. I mean, that's what, one of the conversations we wanna have today is, you know, what size should a mobile vending unit be? I mean, should it be bigger than the 24 or what was the intended purpose, you know, the small little stand, is that the correct size? And so, that's more of a philosophical or a policy issue.
Does this also include like, say, a taco bus?
No, we're gonna get to that. This one here, right now, food trucks are not included. We're also gonna wanna address that because we do have a food truck operation going on. So, that's the issue. I mean, what's, what size should we have vending operations? Have any questions?
To put this in context, the reason we're here is to ask you for your feedback. So, you don't have an ordinance in front of you that's changed or anything because we're looking to get your ideas.
I understand that you want our.
A discussion.
Our thought, yeah. And I'm happy to have that.
A couple of questions. Rod, when I went back and I looked at the ordinance 2004-13, and it talks about at the very beginning in the purpose and also under Section 2C, it talks about a vendor site is the area or location upon a public right-of-way. But then, when it, when you go down to Section 9, it, it goes into where a vendor site, a vending site is on or contiguous with private property. So, first we're talking about a licensing procedure for vendors within the public right-of-way, but then it seems like it drifts off and starts talking about also vendors that might be on private property.
Stephanie might have some input on that.
I think Stephanie wants to talk. City Clerk Stephanie Claus.
So, the issue with private property is really that we didn't want a vendor setting up outside somebody's business without their permission. So, they're on public right-of-way, but we wouldn't want a hot dog truck to set up outside a restaurant. They wouldn't be very happy about having it there. So, they have to have the permission of the, the property owner there so that.
Adjacent.
Yeah, the adjacent property owner so that, you know, it's not something conflicting with their business or that they would not want in front of their shop. So, we don't, any vendors on private property, we don't regulate aside from making sure that they meet fire code or whatever.
They don't have to be licensed?
No.
Because that was my next question. I started thinking about 4th of July and our fireworks vendors, which are generally all set up on private property. They don't, they're not required to have a license other, I mean, they have to.
Other than through the state.
And not, and not for special events anyway. They're exempted, you know, rendezvous in the park or whatever. When people are having special events, vendors don't have to be licensed for that. They just get permission from whoever's running the event.
Whoever they're setting up on, okay.
As the.
How, how, I'm sorry. I have one more question. So, we're talking about vendor trucks and he mentioned a taco truck.
Right.
Because a while back, we actually had a taco truck.
We have a couple, we have one.
That we're operating.
Yes, we have one operating.
No, he's got, they got permission. It doesn't quite fit into our code. That's one of our issues that we wanna talk about today. We wanna, you know, fix our code to make sure that everything is.
So, I've had some vendors request to be able to have a bigger space and it's been an issue with enforcement. We have some pictures here to show you that they're, you know.
This doesn't really show it.
It's hard to see, but.
But it's a, but it's a long table and that's more than 24 square feet. This particular vendor is approximately 60 square feet.
And also, the next one, I measured her at about 63 with what she's using right there.
And sometimes she has a, you know, a different.
A canopy that's maybe 10 by 10, which would be 100 square feet. So, the question is, do we wanna allow that kind of vendor or not? Because really, it was intended for the hot dog carts whenever we started this. So, we need to know if we want something bigger or if I need to do more in enforcement to, you know, it's, it's difficult to be there all the time.
Do you have the taco truck picture here?
No.
No, but we're gonna talk, that's a, another issue. Yes, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Bending from the public right-of-way.
See, and I think of, I think of this as the public right-of-way because the sidewalk is.
It is a public right-of-way.
You're not setting up on the sidewalk.
But you're not driving the taco bus up onto the sidewalk.
No, we're gonna talk about when you.
We've made a little bit different, we have some kind of special specifications with which parking spot they can use and where their line can be and everything if they're on, in a truck.
So, so, okay, Rod.
And, and the, and the truck would not be able to vent into the street. The, it parks on the, next to the sidewalk and vents to the sidewalk. So, the difference between the food truck and these is that the food truck is on the, in the parking stall and venting to the sidewalk. And this is just set up in the sidewalk, just venting to the sidewalk.
So, I, I think it makes sense that we figure out how to make it work. I mean, given our weather, it'd be nice to be able to allow people to have canopies. The common-size canopy is 10 by 10, so those are, you know, bigger. I mean, that's 100 square feet right there. If we were to do that. It seems like it might make sense for that thing to be scooted a little bit closer to the curb so that there is still passage on the sidewalk. I mean, we want people, we want both, I think, people to be able to vent on the sidewalk and people to be able to pass on the sidewalk. And how we do that is the question here, I think.
Yeah, and I, I think we wanna be cautious about not having too many 10 by 10 tents outside of the farmer's market so that people are doing that instead of.
Right. Well, that's true. Right, there's the, avoiding using the farmer's market.
Yeah, because these are both right out, I mean, literally like touching the line of the farmer's market.
Right outside of the farmer's market, yep.
I mean, you could have time limits also too, on when and where you can actually.
Right, yeah. And.
You could have restrictions.
And if we had 10 of them in a row along the sidewalk, then it's, passage is gonna be next to impossible, so.
These are outside the farmer's market.
Go ahead. Not familiar with that particular operation, but it looks to me as if it started out as one thing and has grown at least twice. To expand from what it first started out to, to now we have got tables going this way and tables going that way. We've created an area in the back for someone to work. And I'm thinking that when that thing probably started, it was not that big. So, I guess my question is, is one of the reasons.
That's actually when she reduced the size, because she initially had a 10 by 10 tent. And I, I told her that that was too big, so she reduced the size to that. And now she's, she, last time I went, she was down to just the one table and had it down to the 24 square feet. But it doesn't, it makes it more difficult for her and she has a donut fryer, so if it rains and, you know, you don't want the water going into the oil and stuff, so that's kind of a problem for her.
Yeah.
But it should also, the conversation should be generally about all vending operations. We don't wanna be about a specific vendor.
Yeah, exactly. And that, that was, the crux of my question is, are these vendors slowly but surely getting longer and deeper?
Well, they were until we went out and tried to.
So this conversation, this conversation came up a year or so ago at Farmer's Market Commission as well. And in the process of coming up with the guidelines for farmer's market function, there was some conversation about, well, okay, so we know where the farmer's market is, do we also say where it isn't? In other words, during farmer's market time, do we limit the ability to do other booths within so many feet, blocks, whatever, of the farmer's market? Because, you know, we, we could have some sort of non-farmer market, but similar type of things that squirt off in different directions, up onto the other side of Third Street or down Fifth Street or Fourth Street, Fifth Street, or in this case, on Sixth Street. So we, you know, there are some things that we probably need to think about that are time-based, you know, farmer's market.
And that is actually happening.
And then, part of this is also a situation for how do we serve people between 11:00 and 2:00, 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM, when the bars are letting out and people are leaving and so forth. So that's the other, that's the hot-dog cart part of this.
Right, that I have a little bit more discretion, and so we write in something special for it, and basically, if we get, we tell them if we get a complaint about noise or litter or anything like that, then, you know, it can be revoked.
It looks to me like we're gonna have a multitude of challenges here to take care of. One that hits me first and foremost is, and it was, and it was kind of alluded to a little bit here, is during farmer's market, the number of vendors we're having on the peripheral that seems to be growing, and they're getting, they wanna get larger. And I think that that issue itself is one that the Farmer's Market Commission is going to be bringing up. They've got an extended meeting that is gonna be on policies that they're gonna recommend to the council that's coming up very shortly, and I think that's one of the issues that they're gonna wanna be discussing, too. Because I already thought we had something in place for the farmer's market that did not allow vendors outside the market area for a certain, for a certain distance, but apparently not.
It doesn't allow it in the market.
They don't, they're not allowed in the market, but there is no proximity to the market restrictions.
Right, so you set up just outside of it.
Just as a side comment, it would seem to me that if, they're either gonna be in the market or they're not gonna be there, but this is for the Farmer's Market Commission to discuss.
Well, they can discuss it. Yeah, my question is, the, essentially what Wayne was talking about, we have got people that, for some reason, do not want to be part of the farmer's market?
Well, one wants to be part of the farmer's market, but no longer qualifies. He used to be in the market and is no longer allowed in the market, so.
And just, I know we're not supposed to talk about specifics, but. They don't meet the regulations of the farmer's market.
Yeah, they don't meet the regulations of the farmer's market.
Resale, resale, or they don't use local ingredients.
Or one was a vendor who was getting things from a neighboring farm, and so, you know, also resale, you know.
There's criteria to be in the farmer's market. They weren't needing it because they didn't have the local product, or they were not making the goods themselves here locally. So they were basically reselling on one of them.
Since we kind of brought this up a little bit, maybe we could get Gina as Assistant Chair of the Farmer's Market Commission, perhaps, I think she's got a couple comments that she might wanna make.
Would you like to say something?
If I may?
Yeah.
This isn't about the farmer's market. This is about.
Yeah, but so I've kinda opened it up a little bit, and they're looking for feedback from us, so.
Well, the two examples we have on the screen are right outside of it.
Size, though, you could address, even if the proximity to the market isn't, you know, decided now, but.
Gina.
Hi there. I'm Gina with the, I'm actually the vice chair. I like vice better than assistant.
Vice chair, same thing, pays the same.
Yeah, pays the same, it's true. I wanted to assure you, gentlemen, that on the 12th of November, our next Farmer's Market Commission meeting is gonna be held, and we sat at the last one, and you were there, Wayne. We have a whole list of items that we need to discuss in the off-season. This is one of them, and it is a little bit more pressing because of both of these two vendors that did not meet the policies and the guidelines that were set down for things like resale, and they, the producer needs to be the person that sells the items and that sort of thing. So we are talking about this. I will tell you that, in my day job, in the one that actually does pay me, I'm really concerned about the implication for private property rights, specifically with that vendor that sits on the, right on the South Cuplet there, on Gritman's property. So this'll be a very, very interesting conversation, but it will, we will come forward with some recommendations for you guys soon.
So Farmer's Market Committee wants to take on Gritman Hospital?
No, we're not going to. That's the point.
Gary.
Thanks.
I have nothing else unless you have questions that I can help with.
Thanks, Gina, I'm good. Gary?
Yeah, I think we're just revisiting what we did back in 2003 and 2004, and that is, if you're going to allow private use of the public right-of-way, you have the absolute right to regulate that use. Farmer's Market takes precedence per council authority on those 26 weeks. Everything else, from sidewalk cafes to vendors to food trucks, is all regulated by the council. So if you start looking at the example you have up here, I don't see it as relevant to farmer's market. Farmer's Market can propose any sort of restriction that they want, that the council will buy off on, but the bigger issue as far as the use of the public right-of-way, at least in my mind, and that's what we talked about in '03 and '04, was safe passage for the public, that the main use of these sidewalks is for transportation, not for vending. Council wanted to look at sidewalk cafes, they were adjacent to private property, but they were in the public right-of-way, and we just revisited that on the block party that we had recently.
Gary, I agree. It's not a farmer's market issue, per se, but I do think that whatever ordinance or modification to the ordinance that we come up with should consider time, day, those kinds of things, where Moscow is different at different times of the day, time, or week. And I just think that it's important for us to recognize the reality. Even if it's just a transportation, a walking transportation issue on the sidewalk, we might say, hey, we need better egress for the farmer's market right now here, so let's, so whatever we come up with, I think it's important that we, you know, it's not just the size thing, but it's, or how long it's there, but it's, or proximity to, you know, proximity to market, proximity to private land.
Gary, I think what you're saying is that anything that we come up with as a council and as an ordinance or a change to an ordinance should not be made because of the farmer's market.
This is.
No, not what he said.
Well, this is gonna, the size of this is gonna be beyond just farmer's market. It's not just farmer's market. So you're setting a standard for all, all time, for all the year, and so don't worry about farmer's market can address that, because the three issues when you're dealing with vendors are time limits, proximity restrictions, and even in, you know, the zoning where it's allowed within the city.
Sure, sure.
Proximity.
Couple of separate issues.
To the private, to the competitor business, you know, we don't want somebody sitting in front of a restaurant. A restaurant doesn't want a food or a hot-dog cart right in front of it. Somebody that's gonna compete directly with the brick and mortar.
Unless they sell rolls in the restaurant.
It's easy.
The issue with farmer's market, that's something we can deal with separately.
Absolutely, it's part of the event itself.
Specifically pertaining to the farmer's market. We need to get back to what we're talking about here, and that is, do we increase it from 24 square feet to how big is too big, and what about trucks?
And I would be very supportive of different commissions giving us feedback, you know, Transportation Commission telling us about sidewalks, Farmer's Market Commission telling us about how that functions. So, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that. So that's, that's the sidewalk part of this.
Okay, well, right now, 24, some places are, I've looked at, you know, are a little bit bigger, can be 36 to 48. I haven't seen any much bigger than that because you're dealing with the public.
So maybe we're not saying pitch a tent on the sidewalk. That's the 100-square-feet one. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we were just talking about the consideration of the public right-of-way, you know, downtown, moving on to expanding, you know, the public right-of-ways concerning special events. Do we wanna do anything with that? I like what we did.
When you're talking about right-of-way here, you're now talking about right-of-way off the sidewalk.
No.
Or are you still, you're still talking about this?
The sidewalk and off the sidewalk, too.
Okay.
So this actually could entail the street.
Going toward the street, okay.
Oh, it could entail the streets. Streets are right-of-ways, too.
Yes, sure.
If I may, for instance, some of the things that we've talked about in the past and not talked about lately, the block party, we talked about expansion, temporary expansion of the sidewalk cafes during that event, done by resolution. We also allow wine and beer in public parks pursuant to resolution. We don't allow that on public rights-of-way. However, as we're looking at more special events downtown, the wine and beer tasting that the farmer's market does right now, council may want to look, and we're looking for direction, whether you would like us to propose an expansion of that to allow within a certain areas, such as the Main Street corridor, perhaps from Third to First or, or, excuse me, Sixth to First, or some amount, some defined area. Where you might allow a, in a block party situation or a special event, you might allow a catered venue for beer and wine.
So something like.
In the street itself, rather than.
Something like Art Walk.
Precisely.
Could have some component like that.
As long as it met all of the other regulations. Wondering if you would like us to prepare a draft ordinance for you to look at and discuss?
Personally, I would.
That is part of this.
Personally, I would say no. I would say, right now, anybody that wants, namely, we did it for the downtown block party, and we do it for rendezvous in the park, I think what it does is, it makes the group that is putting on the event make sure that they know exactly what they want because they bring an individual project to the council, and we're able to deal with it, and we deal with it individually, and that being the case, we don't need to worry about it the rest of the time.
If I may, John, I'm not suggesting that it's not done pursuant to a resolution, just like you do it now.
Oh, okay.
It's just it wouldn't be limited to just Friendship Square, it would be that defined area. But you would look at every one. For instance, if the authorizing ordinance were there, you wanted to allow beer and microbrew beer and wine tasting during the farmer's market for purposes of sale, you could do a blanket resolution at the beginning of farmer's market, saying for this season, you can do that within these certain parameters. If there was a downtown block party that was of a different flavor than the one we just had, you wanted to have a beer garden or something like that, council by resolution could authorize that particular event. But you would look at each and every event, at least under.
But the ordinance would allow that.
Precisely.
And right now.
I'm open to that.
We have a limitation on the beer garden in the street. That's the issue. Right now, it's allowed in parks, and that's why we did, during the farmer's market, we did, restricted it to the Friendship Square.
Otherwise, it's open container.
Yes, so we have a conflict with the law. I mean, you could, by resolution, say in a certain street, you could, but it might be inconsistent, so we're just looking for ways to make our code consistent.
I think it would be worth looking at that.
So do be allowed, you know, alcohol in the street with, on a resolution?
Have a recommendation you're looking for from us today?
Well, some directions on vendor size, because there's, that's an issue, whether we want to look at expanding the size of that. Then the special events issue, do we want to allow a beer garden to be encroached into the street? Right now, we can't do that, but, you know, give the authority for the council to do that per resolution, that would divine the parameters of that, but would allow alcohol into the streets like if a street was closed.
Yes, John.
As far as, personally, as far as increasing the size of the individual, you know, they expand by themselves. You give them 12, 24 square feet, just in the act of doing business, they're gonna double that amount because they're gonna have people waiting, and so if you say we're gonna double the size, then we're actually gonna quadruple the size. So I think we ought to leave that alone. And as far as the encompassing a few of these areas and making a, essentially, a blanket or a season-long permission to do a beer garden or to put up a beer garden in someplace other than we've already got them, I think it wouldn't hurt to have.
What about adding a provision, though, for food trucks? Because they're all larger than 24 square feet.
I thought we were, I thought we were gonna talk about food trucks differently.
Yes, and we hadn't talked to that yet.
But, yeah, that's.
We did, we did, we had a slide earlier, but we don't have it now, but one of the issues we're gonna talk about is food trucks.
Did it melt?
Would you like us to bring, prepare something for it? It might have melted. To allow food trucks. We would have to change our ordinance that says, and define exactly what a mobile food vending vehicle is, put that definition in, and allow it.
I would, I think it, I think people are, taco trucks, food trucks, whatever they might be, there are lots of different options. I think it makes sense to figure out some way of having them allowed. Gary, what am I?
What are you trying to keep me from saying?
Well, if you go to certain cities, you have, for instance, last time I was in Washington DC, you walk down the street and there is a block where you have food truck after food truck.
Yep.
It's essentially restaurant row, but there are no other restaurants around that area. It's a, it's a commercial area, so it allows people to, someplace where they're in direct competition with nearby restaurants. Are you talking about food trucks within certain timelines, or are we planning on allowing?
Again, I, I mentioned earlier, time and day and so forth. I think that should be part of this as well. I, you know, when I go, when I go to a restaurant and it's 9:50 and they say, sorry, we're closing our, and I'm like, you know what, I'm still hungry. You know, I, it would be great if there was an ability to go past that 10 o'clock time.
You're talking about closing time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, especially in Moscow, there are a lot of, there's a lot of nightlife in this town for those last four-plus hours and into the next morning, when people would like to be able to have some food. There's, I think, one, maybe, well, no, now just one again, I think, business that stays open that late. I think there's one downtown storefront that has food that late. There was another one for a while, and I think they're closing. But it would be nice if there were some options like that.
The one food truck that is licensed now, because they take a parking space and we don't want to be competing for that, they're only allowed to operate from 9:00 PM until 3:00 AM, so, and, and they have restrictions on lighting and sound and stuff like that, so.
Nine to three seems reasonable.
Yeah, that's in the core downtown, but would you want vending trucks to be able to be, you know, in other parts of the city during the day, you know, lunch hours or?
I have no problem with that.
Vending from the public right-of-way?
Yeah, I really don't have any problem with that. I think that as far as Tom's comment, if there were that many people that wanted food at 11 o'clock at night, more restaurants, that our brick and mortar would stay open. So I think the number of people that are actually veiling themselves of that food stuff are probably small enough that keeping them open any further or any longer than they are already open, and you seem to have it pretty much under control with the one vendor, and if another vendor wanted to open, selling something different, and they wanted to park nose to tail, as they do in Portland, it'd be a good deal.
We have it set so there's only a few parking spots that are okay for them to use, and they are not allowed to reserve those, and they're ones that were recommended by engineering where they think that the line will be safe, you know, back into the sidewalk and stuff like that, so.
Because pedestrian safety is another issue.
I've got a, the only, only place I would have an issue with food vendor trucks in the public right-of-way would be during the hours that regular brick and mortar businesses are open. Because of the, of the tax structure that's involved, those brick and mortar businesses, the restaurants, they're paying property taxes to cover that public right-of-way, that vendor is not. And so I will take a very strong stand and issue against allowing that type of vendor in the public right-of-way during normal business hours.
Actually, we're talking about a food truck, right? Not, because right now, you can do a push cart during the.
Food truck, about a food truck.
Actually, we could probably figure out what that would be. I mean, we could prorate all of that, which I have no problem with either. Say that if you're gonna bring your food truck in and park it, and right next door, you've got Jimmy John's or two blocks away, this is what Jimmy John pays, figuring it out for a year and cut it down, and you're gonna be here for six. out for a year and cut it down, and you're going to be here for six hours, so you get to pay six hours' worth.
And so you could address that on permit fees?
Yes.
And you could address that issue to make sure that they're high enough to generate the revenue that offsets at least some of the costs that were produced by the presence of the food trucks? But you also don't want to raise it high enough, too high where it discourages that activity if that's, if you're going to allow that activity.
You know, and we've had, we've seen in the last 10 years or so, businesses that started off as food trucks that are now brick and mortar stores.
And, and there's also the trend going the other way in this country. Today's people are starting to downsize after the Great Recession.
Exactly. So I, I want to be somewhat flexible for business needs, not, not just...
Right now the license is $60, and it's good for a year, so...
And you may want a difference between the sidewalk vendor and the food truck, too. Make it be different, fees, too. So today we'll work on, you don't want to do anything with the vendor size?
I wouldn't mind increasing it a little bit, as long as it's not infringing upon the public right-of-way enough that people can't get around it.
Okay, so we'll work on bringing something forward that maybe increases the size a little bit, and then...
Twenty eight, 24 square feet is, as I said, you know, it's, well, this is six feet by three feet.
If it was only 24 feet, I would agree with you.
No, this is bigger than that, this is more than...
No, this, this...
Like three feet by eight feet, yeah, something like that.
Three by eight is a regular...
Or four by six, yeah.
Sorry.
Well, no, it's just...
It's hard to, it's hard to regulate, you know, because every week I go out there, and even if I get them down to that size, sometimes they get a little bigger, you know. People tell me later, oh, you know, that was bigger this weekend, or whatever, you know, so...
That's the reason I say keep it, keep it small, because it's going to get bigger. But...
Mission creep.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then one thing else we're always looking forward is the public safety aspect of it, you know, and make sure that we have the sanitation enforcement. If they're selling food, they're going to have to deal with public health, and then make sure that pedestrians have a ability to get around it, so it doesn't congest it.
Okay, I think we've...
We've gotten a lot of stuff...
We've killed that bad enough.
Okay, there were some, there's only one report, the Mayor's Arts Award, as plural awards, more than one award.
Mayor's Arts Awards.
And unfortunately, the same time that we were hearing about water.
I know, and I've talked to Paul about that.
I know.
It's going to happen again, maybe. He changed his date.
Oh, now the story really comes out.
That isn't the story Paul gives, but...
It is, is it?
It's, not only is it on record, it's on TV.
Can I give you guys each one of these, one of the programs from the Mayor's Arts Awards?
Yes, thank you, I just, thank you.
Want to know where the mayor learns so much about art?
Mayor knows a lot about art, actually.
He's giving out words and everything.
Actually.
Yeah, he's...
Good afternoon, Robin Olgren and I, DJ Skaln, Arts Assistant for the City of Moscow, we're here to talk about the Mayor's Arts Awards, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the event, so I was going to let Robin cover that part of our presentation.
Must have been tough in your family. Arts, water, arts, water. What should we do tonight? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
So thanks for giving us this opportunity. I brought the program because if you open it, you can see that we've been doing the Mayor's Arts Awards since 1998. We do them every two years, except for that one year, I think we actually forgot, so we did them in 2011, but we got back on track in 2012. So this was our ninth Mayor's Arts Awards. It was the first one that I presided over as Chair of the Arts Commission, and it was also Mayor Lambert's first, and I think we did pretty well for newbies. We had over 100 people in the room, so our fear of being up against the Water Summit was unfounded. It was a really nice crowd. And up on the slide are the, the winners of this year's Arts Awards. We gave out five in Individual Excellence, Outstanding Achievement in Arts Education, Advocacy, and two Lifetime Achievement Awards. The awards were actually, the physical awards were made by Ben Carpenter, a local woodworker who's gaining national attention. They were quite beautiful. Oh, am I supposed to do this? What do I do? Thank you. So this is the makeup of the Arts Commission right now. We have a really dynamic and diverse commission. We've got a high school representative from Moscow High School, Mackenzie Kreskalan. We've got one, Mac Pierce is our University of Idaho representative, and it's really nice to have young people on the commission. Their, their perspective is, is great. So we've got visual artists, photographers, sculptors, poet, dance, market, marketing people, graphics, so it's a nice spread of commissioners. It was hosted at the 1912 Center. Like I said, Ben Carpenter did the awards, Bloom, we catered the, Bloom catered the event, and the Joe Asker Jazz Trio played up in the balcony, it was very nice. Do you know them? Yeah. Very sweet. So I just want to say that we appreciate your support in all things that we do at the Arts Commission, and I'm really glad that Market now has their own commission sitting here listening to that. So I don't know, do you have any questions, or does the mayor want to add anything? These are your awards after all.
The evening of the Arts Award was really an entertaining and very energetic night for a number of people, and it was very pleasant. I enjoyed it very much, and I think the entire people, you had mentioned there was over 100 folks there, and I think everybody had a really good time. And those types of awards should be a good time, because it's entertainment, in my view. And I think the people there really had an enjoyable time, and I was very happy to be a part of it, so, yeah, very, very nice.
You had a busy night that night.
Yes, I did. There's a lot of things going on that day, so...
That's great.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm very happy, thank you. Okay, that's the last item, we are adjourned. Thank you.